This conference will now be recorded.
We will go ahead and begin. This is the Board of County Commissioners, Churchill County. It's August 16th, 2023, and it's 1:15 PM in the afternoon. So we will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go ahead and have our first public comment. Any comment on any items that are not on the agenda? Sir? Might want to turn the microphone on and state your name. There you go.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is John Downs. I've been a resident of Churchill County for the last 12 years. A few months ago, I came to a similar meeting with this same group. At that meeting, I presented what I felt were compelling arguments in favor of the removal of automatic voting machines for elections held in Churchill County. To date, no one's asked me any questions. In fact, I could tell that there was a general sense of approval by several of you nodding as I spoke. At least, that's what I thought. I described the harsh conditions voters were subjected to while voting machines were safe and sound, nice and warm, a few feet away inside. To this point, I am disappointed that no one has ever contacted me to either assure me that voting machines are safe, or the county's intention to get rid of them and return to paper ballots, as I suggested. To say nothing of the intent to increase voter accommodation at the polling place. I cannot dismiss the fact that no one, not one single locally-elected official, has taken the time to respond to my issue, even though I have personally now been here twice to address this concern. What I conclude from this is that you do not care, and that my concern is not worthy of your consideration. If this is representative of the manner in which all concerns of citizens are taken, then we're in bad shape. I'm not distrustful of machines. I am, however, very reluctant to accept anyone's word for the output of a machine. Even today, leaders in the artificial intelligence field tell us they do not know the impact of AI and what it will have on our society and our civilization. Are we supposed to accept the unverifiable? Are we supposed to accept the outcomes of what these digital devices tell us we should? I have absolutely no confidence in our election system as long as it relies upon automated digital equipment to process and record vote tallies. It's time to at least consider the issue that I presented to you before it's too late. Thank you.
What's your last name?
Downs.
And what's your phone number?
Area code 715-854-7555.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Verification posting of the agenda?
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on August 10th between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, were we going to pull point, Appointment 7E?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as revised with the removal of Item 7E.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as revised, removing Item 7E. All in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for July 6th, 2023?
I move to approve the minutes of July 6th, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of July 6th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. We will go on to our appointments. Appointment A. Our BLM.
All right. Thank you. I am Kim Dow. I am the District Manager for the Carson City District in the Bureau of Land Management. Thank you for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity to provide updates on some of our projects. So for our geothermal projects, we have the Diamond Flat EA. We're working on the preliminary EA for that project. ORMAT has provided us some additional data, and they are still working on providing us some more. The BLM is working on our response to the Nevada shipo in addition to address some of the concerns that they had brought up. On the Wabaska project, the BLM has completed the initial review and submitted comments to the preliminary EA to the third-party contractor who's writing that. We have no change on the Dixie Meadows project. And then on Coyote Canyon, we are reviewing the baseline sections that have been submitted by ORMAT to date, and there are additional baseline data that we are expecting from ORMAT. Moving on to the NDAA, the Fallon Range Training Center expansion. We are currently focusing on hiring the ID team members to help with the implementation of that bill. We have several different aspects of that bill that we are trying to move forward at the same time. Of course, B-16 is the bombing range that the Navy has as their first priority, so we're focused on working through those actions as directed in the bill. And then for Churchill County, we're focused on the direct conveyances and the checkerboard resolution. For Wild Horse and Burrow, the Desatoya Gatherer is scheduled to start on September 24th, so just in about a month here. And the gatherer is for approximately 122 horses. We're also working on the Clan Alpine Horse Gatherer EA. We'd like to thank Churchill County for submitting comments to the preliminary EA. We're currently addressing those in the final EA and working on drafting the decision record. The Bureau Fiber Optic Line, we are expecting to receive the cultural addendum this month. And then the draft EA is expected in October. That will, that's an internal draft EA that would go to the BLM ID teams and to the cooperating agencies for a 30-day review. The public review for this is scheduled for December. We don't have any updates on the Green Link West project, so I'll skip over that. And this is just a map of that transmission line. For the County Line Mine Project, we're currently collecting baseline data for that EA. And then other projects that we're working on, no updates for the Bench Creek Range Improvement Project EA. For special recreation permits, we have the Best in the Desert Vegas-Torino Race. That is going to take place this Friday and Saturday. They have their permit, and they are ready to go. And then on the pain grazing permit renewal, this is actually a little bit incorrect. It says we're working on the preliminary EA. We're actually working on the final EA. And again, I'd like to thank Churchill County for providing comments to the preliminary EA. We've also initiated consultation with the Fish and Wildlife Service for the yellow-billed cuckoo. And that is it for my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Jim Barbie, County Manager. How are you, Kim?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you again. Good. I apologize. I had to depart our last grazing thing early because I had to pick the kids up. I did follow up, though, with Jeremy Drew, and he had confirmed the last time that he had discussed anything with the cadastral folks was in May. And they said they were still trying to do preliminary work and are stand-ready to, he said that he stands ready to help in any way that he can. So I want to make sure that you know that that offer's out there. And then I didn't get a chance to ask because I had to leave early. Do you guys have any kind of timeline on when that map for the, our final map for FRTC should be guesstimated, finished, or ready to go?
Yes. So I did follow up with our cadastral folks after that, after that meeting. And I did share with them that Jeremy is available to support the efforts that they're going through right now, or an internal effort. But, but they do recognize that Jeremy is available to support that if they have any questions. As far as a timeline, I have asked them to put something together, and I have asked them to please come to the next grazing meeting that we have, as well as to the next IEC meeting that we have, to present at both. The presentation will be slightly different at the grazing meeting. Of course, we'll speak to when those maps will be done for, that the permittees are interested in. And then at the IEC meeting, will, the presentation will be more of a general overview of their process. So I don't have an answer for you today, but we will, we will have them present. And they can answer those questions a lot better than I can.
Thank you. When you, when you round up horses, in the past, when that was done, or when it was announced, and then they saw that there was going to be protesters, they canceled the gathering. Are you going to do that?
I don't anticipate any canceling of the gather. We have had some protesters. Just recently, we've had some protesters, and it has not impacted our gather schedule. We have been impacted by litigation, but that, of course, is court-ordered when that happens. But the protesters, I don't anticipate having an impact on our gather schedule.
Well, I would encourage you to go forward with the gathering.
Appreciate the effort.
Is there any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is consideration possible action, annual update, and approval of funding in the amount of $7,500 for the La Houghton Valley Conservation District, and $5,000 for the Stillwater Conservation District for fiscal year 2024.
Hello. So I'm Kristy with La Houghton and Stillwater Conservation District. I'm their district clerk. This year, we got funding from CWSD for $29,500 to clear and snag the river. We just got done paying TCID for helping us clear the river this past fall. And it was, so we got them $25,000 for the year of 2022, and we were behind a year, so we filled that, and we got that paid for $25,000. So we held the Carson River Workdays, which that is, that was on May 15th and 16th. The kid, 350 kids from Numa Elementary School, along with 50 high schoolers, go to the Rambling River Estates Ranches, and they, they learn about the importance of conservation, watersheds, and non-source pollutions. After they are done, La Houghton Conservation District feeds all of them with a hot dog, fruit, a cookie, and some chips. The tree sale, we were, we sold 2,500 bare-root trees this year. The extensions over in our building, I mean, the cooperative of extensions, they gave us a volunteer to help me this year, which was a big help. So that was, that was good. Weed spray, we helped control, along with the weed embatement, 3,804 acres and 178 gallons of spray. What we do is we have a class, and we tell them the importance of how to use the spray, when to use the spray, the safeties, and then they, we give them chemical to go combat their own weeds. So that's a good program, too, that we've been doing. I'm just getting done with the Rambling River Estates audit, and the, the CWSD held a get-on-the-bus tour where they take the bus and you travel from the upper watershed all the way down to the lower watershed. And that's very interesting. They start, they start in Faith Valley, and they end down here at the La Houghton Reservoir. We're down here at Diversion Dam, and then they go back home. And that was through CWSD also. We have been attending a lot of classes with education work group, the flood plan management group, and ag producers working group, and soil health workshops. And that's about it.
Any questions? Did you state your name?
Kristy Sholomond.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments about this particular item? And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve funding in the amount of $7,500 for the La Houghton Conservation District, and $5,000 for the Stillwater Conservation District for fiscal year 2024.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the funding in the amount of $7,500 for the La Houghton Valley Conservation District, and $5,000 for the Stillwater Conservation District for fiscal year 2024. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
It's approved.
C-H-R-S-T-Y?
We will move on to Item C. Consideration possible action, discussion of the request from Chris Thomas to be granted an exception from connecting to the existing sewer infrastructure, which connection is required as a result of parcel split and home construction. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Ross for the record. So back in May, this board received a letter from Mr. Thomas requesting that he be allowed to put this item on the agenda. The item being an exception to hooking up to the sewer system. Several months ago, Mr. Thomas had, had recorded or approved a parcel split, splitting his current property, which leaves one resident on one parcel, and Mr. Thomas would like to build his home on the other parcel. The way the Churchill County Code reads is, it requires that any property that is abutting a street where the sewer infrastructure is located shall connect to such sewer wherever the sewer line is with 180 feet of any building discharging sanitary sewer or processed waste. And this code was adopted to mitigate the continued expansion of septic systems, which could eventually contaminate groundwater supply, not only residential, but also municipal. So Mr. Thomas's property is located at 1320 Moody Lane, which is the northeast corner of the intersection of Rice and Moody. The property does abut a road where the sewer infrastructure is located. There is an 18-inch sewer main that runs down Moody Lane up to the lift station and subsequently up to the sewer treatment facility. If you recall, over a year ago, Mr. Thomas's neighbor directly across the street from him, Mr. Ron Frye, it was also this board's determination that he was required to hook up to the sewer, and which he did. There have been some issues in the past with that sewer connection. There were some odors that were emanating out of the vents coming out of his roof. What the county did to mitigate that is we installed some vented manhole lids along the sewer infrastructure to allow some of those gases to escape. And I met with Mr. Frye a couple of weeks ago, as well as his daughter, and they had both mentioned that there was a dramatic improvement of the smell that was coming out of his vents. The reason that I bring that up is, the more homes that we get into the sewer system, it allows more of the gases to escape to the atmosphere because there's more areas of release. So at this time, Mr. Thomas is here. I'm sure he, if you have some questions for him, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. But as written, the reason that Mr. Thomas wants to do this is he wants to place his home further away than the 180 feet that is required to connect, although there is area for him to build his house that would require for him to connect. So I'm sure he can elaborate on that more.
Yeah. The concern is that the home's going to be three, over 300 feet away from the sewer main. And so for the sewer to actually be able to work efficiently to make it all the way to the sewer main is a great concern to us without the extra costs of a pump system and then junction boxes. We'd have to put in three or four junction boxes, and those would actually be in the entrance off Moody into our property. And so we just want to try to avoid all that.
Just, just a little bit of clarification. I'm pretty familiar with the depth of the sewer infrastructure that runs through Moody, just based on Mr. Frye's connection last year. The depth of that sewer is about 11 feet deep. Top of the pipe is going to be nine and a half. A sewer lateral is required to have a slope of 2% or more. At 300 feet, that would be an elevation drop of six feet. And so it would still be, it would be possible for that 2% at a home that's 300 feet away to still connect to that sewer and drain properly.
The elevation, the, we want to put the home in the lower field, and it's the lowest elevation. That elevation is probably already another four feet lower than the, than the road. So that takes away from the depth that they're actually measuring to the top of that sewer main.
Any questions?
So Chris, on the code, if he's over 180 feet from the sewer line, then he doesn't have to put, hook up into the county sewage?
So, that's correct. The code was rewritten back in 2020. The code in 2014 actually had a distance of 400 feet, and in 2020, that code was amended to read 180 feet. I wasn't here when that code was amended. I don't know why that was written that way, but at one point in time, it was 400 feet. And I will say, the code specifically talks about distance from the building discharging the sewer or processed waste. It does not talk about the property line. And so conceivably, if the home is going to be over 180 feet away, he would not have to hook into the sewer. I just caution the board that this was, this code was written for a reason, to mitigate the amount of septic tanks that we have. That's why this was written. So if the house can be built closer, obviously, Mr. Thomas has decided where he wants to build the house, but I have some reservations on just allowing people to not hook up.
But putting that house where he wants to put it is still within code?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of clarification, too. Outside of the context of the specific situation that you're looking at, as a former member of the State Environmental Commission, I want to remind you that these codes were put in place because of pressure that is being put by the federal EPA on requiring that we're reducing the number of septic systems that we have, specifically in areas where we have more condensed housing coming in, and recognizing that, you know, acre plots and half-acre plots, that's, that is inclusive of those, with the idea being that they're also putting wells there if they're not hooked up onto the water system, yada, yada, yada. We, we obviously get benefit by creating a sewer system and more folks hooking into the sewer system because of the efficiency of the use of the system. But larger than that, in the bigger picture, is if it appears that we, on a local government level, are working in a way to wave folks from the requirements of hooking up to, because part of these codes are meeting requirements of federal EPA, state EPA, that can come back on, on the county where the state becomes more actively engaged in the management of our systems that we have here in our community. And they do that, and I speak from previous job, because of concerns of state, federal EPA taking over state EPA like you see in California. I just want to put a note of caution there. I think we need to be very diligent in how we evaluate any of these that become before us because there are larger repercussions that could happen. Thanks.
So Chris, why does he have to apply for an exception if he's already outside that 180?
The, the reason is, is the house, again, the code was put into place because we're trying to minimize the amount of septic systems that are out there that can contaminate.
Right.
The house, the house could be placed closer in order to minimize that septic system going in.
Right. But that's his land, and it's within code that he could do it.
Understood.
And also, on our property, what's closest to Moody Lane? We have an orchard that's at a higher elevation. There's trees there and all that. And so that's why we wanted to also step it back further, so.
So Chris, you don't know why the code was changed?
I do not know. That, that was before I, I was here. The, I was talking to Mr. Sanford about it. The, the only thing that I can think of is, is this, in this area, the, the infrastructure is about as low as it gets. So our surrounding infrastructure is typically not that low. And the only thing that I can think of is, is for the sake of calculation, if you have an infrastructure that's only seven feet high, and you have to maintain a 2% slope, your house can only be so far away before, before you can't get there. And maybe at the time, that was the reason it was changed to 180 feet. But I'm, I'm only guessing at that. I, that, that's, that's all that is, is why it could or would be. It was at 180 feet, and I, no, excuse me. It was at 400 feet, and it was changed in 2020 to be 180 feet.
Yeah. No, it wasn't before me. I was here. But I don't, I know that we did an update on code, so I don't know if that was some larger compliance. My question was, does, does it specifically call out the house or the property? And how large a property piece is this?
So after the split, we are just under four acres on my parcel.
Gotcha.
But it's three different elevations. It's kind of a unique property.
Roger that.
Yeah. The home that we have now is at the highest elevation. The orchard steps down into a lower elevation, and then the lower field is the lowest elevation.
Mr. Barbie, the code as, as it reads is, well, I won't read the whole thing, but it says, "Shall connect to such sewer after it is available for use whenever such public sewer line is, is within 180 feet of any building discharging sanitary or processed waste."
Were you going to raise your, the house up a little bit in order to avoid any flooding or anything like that?
Yeah. So when I talked to the contractor, yeah, he said he was gonna raise- Yeah, so when I talked to the contractor, yeah, he said he was gonna raise it up a little bit, and then, of course, it would be on a foundation as well.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay. Well, one, one, one thing that the county has been doing, and I've been here for a while, and we're trying to, well, what Chris and Jim both said, we're, we're trying to reduce the number of septic tanks.
Yeah.
In the, in the valley. And to try to encourage people to hook up to the county's septic lines and water lines and so forth like that. I know that we did that over, I can't remember the housing development, but it's over off of Casey Road. And there were about twelve or fifteen homes over there that were on septic tanks. And one of them didn't want to change, and so I went and talked to him, and he, and he agreed to do it. But that is one thing that we're trying to do, is trying to restrict or reduce the amount of septic tanks in the valley.
Yeah, sure.
So.
I understand that.
Yeah, I know.
Just, as far as just, it would be, it would cause constant issues for us to put a home there and be, we would constantly be dealing with septic issues. And so we've gone all these steps, and we're, we're now at the point of purchase of the home, but I had, I had to figure out this issue and see if we could add, put in the septic instead of tying in, because if I can't tie in, it's almost not worth putting the home there.
Yeah.
And so, and the house that we live in right now was built in nineteen forty-three, and we're ready for a new home, so.
Forty-three. So is the cost between the two about the same, or is there a big difference?
I, I, I don't know if you can say the cost is the same. I mean, if you hook up into the system, you're going to have your initial hookup fee of sixty-five hundred dollars, and then you have your basic charge that you pay every month of, I want to say, I think it's sixty-two dollars a month. A septic system, I'm not real familiar with them, but I'm assuming they last for twen- maybe twenty or twenty-five years, and I'm, I'm sure you've got to pump them out a few times during that, that life cycle. So there, there's, there's less of an upfront cost when you hook into the system, but depending on how far away you are, you've got the cost to actually install the, the line and do the tie-in and everything like that. So it's, it's probably, it's probably a wash. But there's also the, there's, there's also the, the peace of mind knowing that you don't have any septic issues. You don't have to worry about your leach field flooding. You don't have to worry about your, your problems having, you know, problems that you have with your tank and, and things like that, and that's.
But where, where he wants to put the house right now, there's an elevation issue between our sewers.
And, and I, I, I didn't know the, the elevation that was there. All I was calculating was that a constant two percent slope, you've got six feet of drop. If he's saying they're four feet down, yeah, then, then granted, you, you don't have enough to make that fall. My, my only, my only comment, my only concern was, I understand that this, this is a big piece of property, and, and, and he's decided where he wants to build his house, and, and I don't, I, I mean, that's, that's his prerogative to decide. My only thing is if we're, if we're honestly trying to reduce the amount of septic systems, and there is the possibility of moving your house in a different location on the property in order to comply with that code, that, that's really the only reason I wanted to bring this up.
Right, but it looks like he is complying with the code where he wants to put the house.
Yeah, if, if he builds his house where it is, and all I'm saying is if he were to move his house in order that we don't have another septic system, that is an option.
So right now, this is where he wants to put the house?
That's correct.
But if he decides to move it closer.
Right.
Then it would change everything.
Yeah, I really don't have that option of moving it that close to where I'd be in, within a hundred and eighty feet, without it being on the, the bank of the orchard, without demoing the home we're in now, which we're actually filling out the permit for accessory dwelling. They said we could have it as an accessory dwelling. It's small enough, so it's just, yeah, it'd be a lot more cost, and, and it's where the wife wants the home, so.
If, if we deny this, can he still move forward with a septic tank?
Uh, yes. I, I mean, basically, you're making the decision today to, to, let, let me rephrase that. If, if you deny this, you're denying his variance to, to.
Hook into the line.
That's, that's right. So the decision here, depending on what you decide, is, is going to be, yes, we approve Mr. Thomas's exception to hook in, or no, we don't approve his exception or his variance to hook in, therefore having to hook in. So I know that is, is complicated, but if you say yes, you're approving his, his request.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I do have a question. You may have.
Could you come up to, and, and speak into the microphone?
Right next to one of the Chris's.
Chris Sandwich.
And state your name, please.
My name is Michael Pinnick. I'm just a concerned citizen. You may have covered this, and I may have missed it. I can't hear too well back there. Is the location of the house, is it the closest point of the house, is that the hundred and eighty feet? Or is the actual sewer discharge from the house to the sewer, is that the hundred and eighty feet?
Maybe he could answer that.
Our, our code does not specify. It says the building. It doesn't say the point of the closest toilet or closest shower or whatever to that.
But any corner of the, the closest corner of the house.
We would pick the closest corner of the house.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We've, uh, we've measured it, and we're right at three hundred and fifty feet away.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty feet away, yeah.
Okay, with the downslope.
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead, one.
I move to accept the applicant's request for an exception to connect to the county sewer infrastructure and install a septic tank as long as his plans are currently where they're at. If he decides to change it, then he will have to come back to the board. And get another exception.
Yeah.
For this.
Absolutely, agreed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the applicant's request for an exception to connect to the county sewer infrastructure. As long as your plan, you state it again.
As long as your plans stay where they are currently, and you stay three hundred and fifty feet away from the sewage system. If the plans change and the house moves into a different location, you will have to come back to the board for another exception.
Come back to us.
Understandable, yeah, definitely.
Right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And, and Chris, let's take a look at that code down the road and see why it was changed.
Specifically, that code, Joe and I had that same conversation prior to the meeting.
Maybe we can change it back.
That code was changed to match the existing code for requirement of water connection, which is also one eighty. Yep.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item D. Consideration possible action, approval of a comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management regarding preliminary environmental assessment for the November two thousand twenty-three competitive geothermal lease sale.
Who's going to take this one?
Jeremy.
Jeremy, go for it.
Chairman, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. We've got a pretty straightforward letter for you today. The Carson City District, the BLM, is analyzing a competitive geothermal lease sale. This is kind of the initial steps to allow companies to come forward for exploration and potential future development with more rigorous environmental clearance. What this does is identify some of those areas that will be opened up for a potential competitive geothermal lease sale. There's two in, in Churchill County, one immediately east of the Stillwater National Refuge, kind of on both sides of East County Road, and one immediately south of the Bravo Sixteen area that the Navy is expanding into and generally along Simpson Road. We identify in the letter that we generally support geothermal development and support the project. The two things that we flag that we want to make sure aren't impacted are access on both public and county roads. Obviously, Simpson Road and East County are going to be very critical with the Navy expansion, so we want to make sure we don't have any access curtailed there. And then we also want to make sure there's no conflict with lands flagged for potential conveyance under Public Law one seventeen two sixty-three, which is the NDAA, and some of those parcels that were marked for conveyance to Churchill County under RMPP. And so we just want to make sure that the final EA discloses that, includes an analysis of those areas, and again, kind of putting a marker down to make sure we don't have impacts to public access going forward. Chairman, that's kind of a quick brief of the letter, but as always, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment? Any questions for Jeremy? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the comment letter as presented.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the comment letter as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item E, we, we are, we've, we've tabled that one. That one's not going to happen, because Damar is not here. We'll go to F. Consideration possible action, approval of a seven-month extension request by Hyatt Land and Development LLC to complete the road improvements to record the parcel map for property located at twenty-eight eighty Enterprise Way in Fallon. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Chris Ross for the record. So you've seen this before. Hyatt Land and Development is wanting to record their parcel map. They requested an extension to do the road improvements five months ago. They only wanted a five-month extension because they felt they could get the work done. I received a, a request from Hyatt Land and Development that they ran into some problems with their contractor, and they've requested another extension. The board, the board can approve a, a one-year extension for recording these parcel maps, and so I've, I'm before you to request an approval for the balance of that twelve-month period for seven months for Hyatt Land and Development to complete the, the road improvements. I, I don't think, seven months will take this project into February or so, and there won't be any paving done. So I've been assured by Hyatt Land and Development that they will have this done right around the end of September or October. The, the five-month extension was expiring here at the middle of this month, so they just needed to request a little bit more. Instead of coming back for you a third time and asking for a few more months' extension, I just said, well, let's bump it to seven months and kind of go the whole year. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any public comment? Any questions for Chris? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the seven-month extension request to complete the road improvements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the seven-month extension request to complete the road improvements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Consideration for possible action, ratification of an agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the Nevada Housing Division in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred dollars to provide rural Nevada continuum of care, coordination, and rental of an apartment for individuals who are literally homeless. Shannon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. We are in receipt of grant funds in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred dollars, and these are state tenant-based rental assistance funds that are passed through down to communities to provide assistance for those that are literally homeless. This one's a little unique. Usually, we only receive for subsidies for units in the community, but this year, we had submitted our emergency solutions grant. They did not have enough funding to provide to support our path room that we have had since twenty, two thousand and three, excuse me. And so they did give us an additional three thousand dollars in this grant to meet that need, so we could keep that lease going. Also, we're receiving seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to support the Rural Nevada Continuum of Care. Previously, I brought a contract forward for the Rural Nevada Continuum of Care so that we could go into our application process with HUD. This next one, I will be bringing forward an agreement for the next year to help support the coordination. So it's basically a pass-through. We have a court, contractor that'll provide those services to all the rural communities, and then we'll act as the pass-through and the monitor of that contract. So this is the state's portion of that proposed contract that'll be coming forward. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Any public comment? Yes, sir. You want to come forward?
Thank you again. My name is Michael Pinnick. I believe in helping everybody that we possibly can. I don't know if it's possible, but I think there should be a, a, amendment to this, or somehow it should be stated that we provide this apartment for people that are literally homeless, as long, we don't do it, as long as there are jobs in the, available in the county, and as long as the person that we're going to give the apartment to is, if they're physically or mentally unable to work, then they could get it. Other than that, I don't think it should be approved. Thank you.
Shannon.
In response, sir, this is our program guidelines. You are required to have income to be in any of our homeless programs, and that income could be disability, it can be unemployment, and it can, and then we will help them to obtain work if they're able to. The whole goal of all of our homeless programs are you have to be a resident of our county, you come in and you're removed from that literally homeless state. How's, we wrap services around that, and that may be counseling, that may be of all sorts, plus increase their income, so after a two-year period, they become stabilized within and contribute to our community. And those program guidelines have been in place since two thousand and three.
Any other questions or comments for Shannon?
So just clarification, County Manager Barbie, the program is really focused on transitioning, correct? Do, do they have to be moving forward and they're, they're documented and consulted along the way?
Absolutely. All of our programs are transitional programs. They are not shelter programs. So you are transitioning them back into the community to be productive citizens, residents of our community, excuse me.
Thank you.
Shannon, do you run into people who don't want a home? Who, who prefer living homeless?
Absolutely. And I just spent the last two days in Reno, working with the statewide continuum of cares, talking about this thing, same thing for homelessness. There are individuals that do not desire to be housed. They may need little support so that they, you know, are safe in the community, but it is a choice. It's not illegal to be homeless. Our goal is to work with individuals to build their confidence to become housed and want to be housed and to have employment. We have quite a few that have been homeless, they're called chronically homeless, so they do wander the streets, and it may be due to mental health issues. They don't understand that being in a house can be safe. They may have had a bad experience. We've had a general man that we've worked with for seven years. We've had him housed three different times, but he hasn't been able to maintain housing because he was chronically homeless, and he doesn't understand you can't bring a mouse in and make that your pet, because now you have fifty mice. But our goal is to work with them to help them understand that. We do provide supports and encampments and other things also.
Yeah, I've, I've run into those folks, too. So, any other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the ratification as presented.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thanks, Shannon. We will go now to Consideration Possible Action: Ratification of an Agreement Between Churchill County Social Services and the State of Nevada Department of Public and Behavioral Health in the Amount of $1.6 million to purchase and complete the modifications necessary for the creation of a health and human services facility. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So November of 2021, we started working with the state to develop a plan to create an overall health space. It had started really as for treatment when we were in COVID. We needed something that you could have negative air, you can have exterior entrances for the long term. As of today, this has been revised to actually include a health and social services place, and it's $1.6 million for the purchase of the properties located on South Main Street and also provide the modifications necessary for those buildings. This is funds that were approved through the IFC, and I'll be honest, it has taken us nine months to complete this agreement. That's why it's just coming before you now. Any questions?
So this is a grant. This is not taxpayer money, not our taxpayer money.
Well, it does come from the federal government, through the state, through the ARPA funds.
We're paying those taxes, I know.
But it comes, but it is 100% grant to us. There is no matching requirements.
Thank you.
Shannon, does this include any updates to the building?
Absolutely. So this is purchase and modifications to the building, plus purchase of desks, security equipment, all of those things that we will need.
Any other questions? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ratification as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to item I. Consideration Possible Action: Approval of Agreement Between Churchill County and Nevada Housing Division, Department of Business and Industries in the Amount of $1,743,500 to Support the Creation of a New Pass House and Day Center for Homeless Services.
Again, for the-
I probably talked longer than you'll have to talk.
For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services, again. This is very exciting. I will be honest, this was an application we put forward in November of 2022 and started this process. The Home Means Nevada Initiative was funding that was approved through the IFC to create stable housing in the state of Nevada. One of the big things with it, when it came out, it said that local governments could only apply for acquisition of property. And I happened to be in a meeting two days before this pre-application was due and mentioned this was a concern, because in rural Nevada, most social services, human services agencies provide all of these services. They are not nonprofits. And the administrator at that time said, go ahead and submit if you feel you have a viable project. So we did meet with different officials in the county, and 48 hours later, we submitted our pre-application. The goal of this project is to create a space that would build transitional housing, which those same rules that I mentioned in the previous agenda item would apply, but we would have access to housing immediately. Over the past five years, it's been increasingly more and more of a concern to obtain housing at fair market rent and that are habitable due to the federal standards. So this space would allow us to create these apartments, plus have a day center. One of the things is, we do have homeless that are wandering the different streets. They're trying to get into different areas because they need showers. They need to access laundry services. They need to warm up a meal. Some do have severely mentally, severe illnesses. We would like to create a quiet space, and then we can do crisis intervention and provide counseling for those individuals. This allows one place for homeless to access for these different services. The funds that have been awarded are for, first, they started with a purchase. We know what has happened to our real estate market. Every time we would get close to finding something, it would sell. So we did revamp this, and this would be for the property located at 165 North Ada Street, which would be where the DA's office is, and they are moving. So we would take over that space, and then we have the little over 1.7 million to do the rehab of that building, the modifications necessary to make it a proper space and to furnish it. If there's any questions, I would have the answer.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, Buzz, I would like to correct. In our agenda, the address is wrong. It says 165 North Taylor Street. It's 165 North Ada.
Thank you. I apologize.
Okay. I was wondering where North, I was thinking it was right here.
You know, I'm going to do that little apartment over there. I don't know. A lot of addresses in all of these.
Well, this gentleman brought up a good point when he had public comment, and that was, these people now that would be housed would be looking to improve themselves.
Absolutely. You know, the day center, I will be honest, the day center is open for anybody that does need services. That would be the goal, but the goal is also to build a relationship with that homeless individual, help them get the mental health counseling, substance abuse counseling, and then want to improve themselves more. On average, if somebody that's chronically homeless with severe mental illness, it can take up to five years to build that relationship and have them come in and be comfortable to talk to us. This allows that space, and it's not here in the county administration building. It is a place that others can come and build those relationships. Our case manager and a community health worker would be housed there, not housed, but they would be staffed there to provide those services.
Okay. Any other questions?
And we're not going to allow them to camp out in the parking lot?
No.
Okay.
No, we, no, no, there would be no camping, and one of the biggest things is, and I want to thank Chris Spross on both of these projects. He's been amazing. But the security and the cameras, as we develop this, is going to be extremely necessary.
Okay. No camping.
No camping.
Glamping.
Any other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the grant agreement and declaration of restrictive covenant running with land for the Home Means Nevada Initiative as presented, and to authorize the chair to execute the same.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement and declaration of restriction covenant running with land for the Home Mean Nevada Initiative as presented, and to authorize the chair to execute the same. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Appointment J. Consideration Possible Action: Approval of a Real Estate Purchase Agreement for Property Located at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the Amount of $500,000. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record, I'll get this one started, and I'll look to Joe to back clean up for what I screw up on this. This is connected to the grant that you approved to receive, the $1.6 million. We closed on 270 South Main last week, which is the old furniture store. This would be the old J.C. Penney's store on Main, right next door to that store. And so this would basically, by those two properties, we would actually, as part of that, funds that would be in excess, the $700,000, $800,000, would utilize to create a connector on the second floor between the two buildings, and then to remodel in the floor space of the old J.C. Penney's to be kind of the clinical healthcare side of the facility that Shannon was talking to you previously about. This has great benefit in its connection to the existing building that we just closed on. Additionally, the benefits of connecting this property to the one we bought last week is that we will have the required or necessary parking to house, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30 staff, and co-located in these two buildings and these two properties on Main Street. And then the benefits that this will have on Main Street itself in terms of putting 20, 30 folks working down there daily and their interactions with the stores and store owners and such down on Main Street. So the purpose of this is to locate Central Nevada Health District and the Churchill County Social Services into these two properties. Joe, do you want to talk about the purchase?
Sure. This is a, this purchase agreement, just like our other ones, will have to get a final approval once an appraisal is received. Other than that, this is just a single piece of parcel that is connected. It does not have some of the improvements that are in the 270 property, but once they are opened and connected together, we can share some of those resources and facilities. Currently, there are no tenants in this property, and so it should be a little bit easier for us to move forward quickly around the same time that the other tenants get out of the other building.
I would just add, we're looking at a 30-day closing on this, correct?
Yes, September 11th is the projected closing day.
How does the city feel about us moving down on Main Street? Say that again. How does the city feel about us moving down on Main Street?
Conversations. Thank you again. Jim Barbie, for the record, conversations I've had with the city, they are more than supportive of having the Central Nevada Health District, which the mayor is chair of, and social services located in that proximity on Main Street. They've been very supportive.
Yeah, I talked to Bob Erickson, and they seemed pretty pleased with it, too, so. All right, any other questions? Yes, come on.
Michael Pennick, only one in. I hate to be a bother again. My only question is, as we change what our beautiful historic downtown looks like, is there any kind of stipulation that the new building will add to the charm of our downtown rather than completely change it? Thank you.
Well, right now, those buildings are vacant.
Right. Yeah, I understand. They're an eyesore right now, but somebody could at some point, you know, use it the way it is. If, and if we're going to build something new or remodel it, I only ask that we try to make it look like the city looks.
I think it will.
It's going to be better than what may go in there.
For the record, Jim Barbie, there are no current requirements. I think that's why you see the buildings in some instances in the shape that they are, that I'm aware of in terms of the city. But in the preliminary meetings that Mr. Spross and I have had, looking at the property, along with Ms. Ernst, we want to try to tie those buildings together in a common appearance. We've looked at some of the historical, and you may or may not be aware of this, the stone front that's on the two-story former furniture store was stone that was, as I understand it, quarried up on Rattlesnake Hill. We obviously are no longer allowed to quarry on Rattlesnake Hill, but we have already discussed trying to find rock fronts that have the same kind of texture and coloring that we can utilize within reason of ability, because we have whatever, $700,000, $800,000 to stretch across the full refab, including paving in the back of the property, which is now on gravel. So when we're done and complete, that's the vision, is that we would make the two look very similar and be very supportive of the historic look of the downtown. That's the ideology that we're working with.
The city would be really, well, they would be very unhappy with us if we did anything that would be to the detriment of downtown. So, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the real estate purchase agreement for property located at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the real estate purchase agreement for property located at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $500,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. We'll go to letters. Anybody want to pull anything out on letters? If not, we'll move on to new business. New business. Consideration Possible Action: Approval of Automatic Budget Augmentation, number two, for grants for the fiscal year 2022-23. Sherry?
Thank you.
I assume that's you.
That is me. This is pretty much just an automatic augmentation for grants that we've already gotten. This would, this is for 3.3464,224,000, which was the ARPA grant that was for the PELT. This is just increasing the budget so that it balances for fiscal year 22-23, and this has already been approved by taxation. They've approved all our augmentations for the 22-23 budget. So I'm just bringing this as an informational approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Sherry? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and note in the minutes the automatic augmentation for grants received by Churchill County for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and note in the minutes the automatic augmentation for grants received by Churchill County for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll go on to Consent Agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out in Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the consent items.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Future Agenda Items. Anybody have anything?
County code pertinent to hooking up on sewer systems?
Second it.
Already have a meeting scheduled.
Perfect. Okay. All right, we'll go on to Commissioner, Management, and Staff Reports. I'll start. It'll be very brief. I attended the IEC meeting along with Jim. It was an interesting meeting, especially the public comment. It was very interesting. I don't know when the next one is scheduled. I also attended the Fallon Youth Center Board of Directors meeting last night. It was, it was an interesting meeting, too. And after this meeting, I'll be going to the Carson Water Subconservancy District meeting in, actually, this one's taking place in Virginia City. That's it. Justin?
I attended a Parks and Rec meeting and got briefed on the new plans for the Simpoma plans that you guys got going on. It's looking great. Attended the back-to-school night last Friday for the high school. Thank you guys for cooking.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I forgot about that.
I had a kid in school, so I guess I'm the only one that's got a high school right now on the board. And then attended a Lahan Conservation District meeting yesterday.
I have two grandkids in high school, a senior and a freshman.
Oh, that was a great thing.
Yeah, it was a very nice thing. Great event.
I had a fire board meeting last week, just discussing general fire things for Churchill County and the city of Fallon. Then I also attended the back-to-school night and cooked my arm crisper than the hot dogs by the end of the day, so that was good.
Yeah. Jim?
Lots of meeting, lots of stuff moving around. We're continuing to move forward on planning and design with the courthouse and the modifications on CCOM with the DA's office. We continue to track and try to meet the requirements of the Department of Transportation, both state and federal, on the Drum Building. We do hope to bring some of those fund approvals- We do hope to bring some of those fund approvals to you in the near future, but we are not confident enough to give you a date of when that near future might be because every time Shannon gives them the answer, they come up with another set of questions. But, you know, that is a project that we're, we do dearly, desperately want to move forward with because CART has been dislocated for a year now, at least, and are temporarily parked at the Rafter 3C complex, and we want to get them over there on Main Street where it's got greater connectivity with the services that we have there for the seniors and such. So we continue to pursue that. We worry about monies and authorities, but that's where we're at.
Sherri?
I just wanted to let you know that we got the second half of the PELT money from the ARPA funds last week in the sum of $3,464,224. So those will be brought before you within this fiscal year to see how you want to expend those funds. Thank you.
Joe?
I don't have anything.
I would just remind you all that property taxes, the first installment, is due on Monday, so our office has been busier than normal with collecting taxes.
Okay. Any other comment? Chris, anything? Shannon, anything? Claims and payroll transmittals? And our last public comment. Sir, do you have anything else you want to add?
Would you be the people I would ask to get my property taxes voided for the next year?
You'd have to go talk to Linda about that one. All right. We're adjourned.